All right, everybody. We'll call the public hearing in order. If everybody would stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains one nation under God, in the best of all, with its just as it is.
All right, everybody. Apologize for the yelling. I promise I'm not yelling at you. I'm just trying to project through the mask into the reporter and then into the technology. So it seems like I'm yelling and being loud. My apologies. We will go ahead and begin the public hearing for the variance request for Sherri Woods and the Frigid Frog and the Toasty Toad. As a reminder, both sides, for and against, will have up to 10 minutes to present their case. 10 minutes total. We will go over the articles for variance and the conditions that the Toasty Toad is requesting a variance for. So Dina, with all that being said, I'll let you go ahead and start and describe the variances or call Sherri as is appropriate.
If you look in the second page of your packet, you'll see the newspaper article that was written and advertised. Sherri is filed for a variance on six different items that are zoning and our building ordinances. One of them is all building fronts and size must be brick. Number two, trailers may not be used as traditional highway commercial buildings. Number three, permanent foundations shall meet requirements of standard building code for manufactured homes. Number four, the underpinning for manufactured homes shall be masonry block on a foundation. Five, parking shall be located in the rear of the building. And number six, drive-throughs shall be located to the rear of the building. If you will see her reasons, Sherri, do you want to come up and talk to council about your reasons that you come to file there?
Step up to the microphone, state your name, where you live, and then you can go into your points.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sherri Woods. I live in Sonoy, Georgia, 400 Burgess Hunter Road, 30276. We have been, we've had our business in, we have had our business in Sharpsburg since 2011 with the Frigid Frog. And I'm having a little deja vu moment here, so hang tight. As most of you know, we've had this drive-through idea for a few years. However, with our increased mobile business, the drive-through concept kind of ended up on the back burner. Due to COVID-19, the film industry stopped rolling on March 18th, as did our gourmet coffee truck, the Toasty Toad. So a little funny thing, our last celebrity to taste our delicious coffee was Bruce Willis. He liked his hazelnut latte so much, he politely tipped us $50. But not only has our coffee trucks, trucks stopped rolling, our Frigid Frog trailer is also missing out on many special events, local events with the schools this year. So we've really taken this time, the downtime, to really get serious about our drive-through concept. Thank you to the early COVID opportunity to make a temporary drive-through in order to continue trying to make a living. We were very encouraged with the feedback from our customers. As we all know, having a drive-through option seems to be the wave of the future in these COVID-19 times. As a matter of fact, an article just came out that Burger King has even revamped their stores, moving forward to accommodate larger drive-through lines and limiting the inside seating. So, I mean, they're probably more knowledgeable about trends and upcoming things than I am. So we are here this evening to ask for the following variances in order to make this dream a reality. And I know Dina just read the variances, but the building will be constructed off-site and delivered to the lot. The building design does not include brick on three sides. As we presented last year to you guys, we're still going with the same gray building, gray painted building, white trim, very Joanna Gaines meets rustic. You know, it's trendy, cute, nothing blue and pink, crazy like that. And due to not being the landowner, we're seeking to place, the building is temporary, it's not on wheels, but it, a temporary building at the lot at 6612 Highway 54. And in order to least affect the natural topography of the lot, we would like to place the building on a cinder block foundation so we can bring it up to where we don't have to do as much work to the rear of the property where the septic tank will be located. And it will, it will look like it belongs versus a totally new something, you know, because our, the grass is so pretty back there and it's just a nice lot. And the underpinning will be a painted veneer that complements the structure. So you're not going to see the cinder blocks, you're not going to see it looking all temporary, if you will. And due to the topography of the property as well, the location of the drive-through lane and the septic tank location where the soils test determined it should be, the employee parking is unable to be located in the rear of the property, so we're going to choose on the side. And due to the size of the building, being that it's small in nature, we, the narrow side of the building will be front and rear, and then it will be, so if you're standing in 54 looking at it, it will be shorter here and longer here. And that the drive-through window is unable to be placed on the rear of the building for that, for that side. And just a side note, our vehicles were all inspected last week. We got 100 from the Environmental Health. Yay us. And the inspector confirmed, I think this is kind of cool, that Sharpsburg, if you allow this to happen, that Sharpsburg would have the only mom and pop drive-through coffee shop in all of Coweta County. Of course, you've got, you know, the name brands, but as far as just locally owned and owned. It would be great to be able to evolve our business into something even better right here in Sharpsburg where we've been building our Frigid Frog business since 2011. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Please.
Do we have any questions from council about the variances that are requested? All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak for the variances? All right. Okay, do we have anybody that wants to speak against the variance requests? All right. With that being said, if there are no other additional public comments, Brad, is there anything else that I'm missing in the technicalities to make sure we check off all the boxes?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it all, all or none? Is it everything or nothing, or is it one at a time?
Can we pick and choose the variances that we, we, do we have to vote on each of the variances individually, or do we do it as a group?
You could vote on all of them together, but if one person voted no, I mean, it would have to be unanimous, because you voted on all of them. So then you would have to take one each individually. And I think that during discussion, council will probably address those issues that they may have an issue with or have additional questions about. And then at that point in time, you can address that one particular issue. Of course, they're, you know, it's somewhat problematic because some of these, some of the six are dependent on one or the other, if that makes sense. Some are not, but in other words, like three and four would go together. And then five and six would have to go together. You follow what I mean?
Yes, absolutely.
In other words, she's explained the limitations on the lot as to why she can't put the drive-through in the rear, why she can't put the parking in the rear. So it becomes, some of it becomes problematic. I can't speak to Ms. Woods, but it seems to me she's told you everything, you know, the only one that might would be number one, because obviously if you deny two, the whole thing's up.
Right.
Do you see it?
Absolutely.
But number one, being architectural standard, you know, it might be an expense, but you could require to put brick on three sides and it's not, you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Council, do y'all have, having heard that from Brad, do y'all have any additional questions on any of the variance items that are listed, one through six, on the sheet?
I don't.
The only question I've got, and this is a general question for Brad, are we setting a precedent for things in the future by doing any of this?
Well, it's, it's, this is part of the issue that we talked about with the zoning ordinance as it is, that needs some review and addressing. These would only be precedential to this particular lot under the circumstances, because she has sort of been operating under these same conditions, under a previous variance for some time anyway. So, but I do say that that's something that needs to be addressed in the long term.
And I do have, just as an aside, I do have an update on the zoning ordinances and ordinances overall, and I'll get counsel during the mayor's minutes.
One more comment. I've got a nice corner lot, you know. So I hope you all are still on the council when I get ready to do something other than what's there, because I'm going to sure use it as a precedent.
Absolutely. And we have a couple of other projects that we are hoping to bring online, and if you want me to add you to the, to the development opportunity.
Why don't they talk to you before I say anything like that?
Okay, absolutely. Sounds like a plan. We'll, we'll get together. Okay, so if we don't have any additional comments against, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, if there are no objections from council or members of the public. Do I need to get a motion for that, Brad, to close it?
No.
Okay, all right. The meeting, the public hearing is closed. All right, and then I'd like to call our regular council meeting to order. Madden clerk, do we have a quorum?
We should do.
Excellent. The first thing that we've got is a review and approval of the minutes from last month's council meeting. If you will flip to page nine of your packet, you will find last month's meeting minutes. Dina, I don't know if you want to make the change, or if we actually said September 1st, but on page 10, the first paragraph, signs will be put up saying as of September 1st, 2020 vehicles are limited. It actually says September 15th.
Should be 15. I'll change that.
I don't know if it matters, but it says 15 on the signs up there.
Yeah, I will change that, but we can still approve it with the changes.
And if there are no other questions on the minutes, if I can get a motion to accept?
I'm motion.
All right, I actually, I heard Cynthia first.
I'm motion to accept the change.
Oh, with the change, okay. Tom, did you want to come in on the second?
Yeah, sure.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right. The first item that we have under new business is consideration of the variance request from Sherri Woods. So I'll go ahead and ask council if I can get a motion to accept the six variances as proposed.
I'd motion to accept the six as proposed.
All right, so Tom has the first?
I'll second. Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
I would make one suggestion, because based upon what Mr. Pinkel said, that these particular variances be conditioned upon the uses, the Toasty Toad, Frigid Frog, and then if it were converted to any other use, that they come back before council.
Yes. Okay. And that would address, is that acceptable? So, so, so in layman's terms, what you're saying is those variants condition, conditional exist as long as they occupy and keep the property, or?
As to that use.
As to that use.
For it.
Okay. And that will survive any zoning changes that we put in place, say, first quarter of next year?
It could.
It could, okay. All right. Excellent. So if I can get a motion from council to accept the six variances that have been proposed with the condition that it is only in force as long as the property is used by Frigid Frog and Toasty Toad, is that good? Good? All right?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Elizabeth has that first.
I'll say that.
On the, on the, the second, the second motion.
The amended motion.
The amended.
Amended, Mr. Pinkel, by.
Okay. On the amended motion. All right, so Elizabeth has the first, Tom has the second. All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You're not the first person to say that. Okay, so the second item on the agenda is the resolution to authorize the execution of the coronavirus relief fund. Basically, what this is, is this is a resolution by council to accept the CARES Act grant funding, which is federal money that has been passed down to the state and then passed down to the locals. Dina, you want to talk about the specifics and the amounts that we are requesting?
Yes.
And y'all see how she's smiling down there, right?
Y'all just don't know, about 30 minutes ago, I got the biggest news that we were approved for all of our entries, that we worked two weeks on getting just the right verbiage to give them, just to get through the next step. So we received, I think you can get up, we got about $18,000 for the CARES Act grant through the state of Georgia. We received our first 30%, which was $5,559, and we were approved to use my salary for that because I worked from home and I was working 24/7, phone calls, blah, blah, blah.
Focused directly on coronavirus relief.
Yes, yes. And so we came back and we were able to use $2,601 for legal fees for the technical assistance on the mitigation of the COVID-19 related threats that was approved today. So we were able to get part of our 70% approved. We're still working on a $758 submission for, at-home expenses like the laptop and just little supplies for hand-satirizing stations and the temperature-taking thermometers and more stuff like that. So we've got to work on this submission because it was returned to us because of an Excel spreadsheet. This is how difficult, you understand, difficult this CARES Act program is to, and Brad can vouch for this, he's been guarded too with difficulties on this grant. So today, our last expenditure was $9,869.66. It was actually approved today, so we could also get our whole $18,000. A lot of our small towns were not able to do that. I know Sharon didn't even meet their qualifications at all, so they, I don't know what they're going to do with their money. So I talked to Clarence Bolton, he was actually calling to get some help, and I told him what we did, and he's like, oh, we didn't do that. And I'm like, we did, and we were approved, but we just got finalization that we were, we're going to get submission for all $18,000. So I'm very excited.
Thank you.
And we, the flu has helped me, it's just, it's just been a mess.
And this is reimbursement for money that we have already spent, however, it does come in and replace?
Salary.
$18,000 is $18,000. You know, this is something that will?
What complements what we lost out on not paying our taxes.
Which is exactly right, because the $18,000 that we lost is very close to the, it's more than, but it's very close to the rental income that we lost out of here.
Probably the rental income and then the expenses that we spent.
That's pretty, yeah, pretty close, yeah. I, that's, that's, that's real close. So kudos to Dina and staff for just being patient and working on it over and over and over. I think the state did an admirable job pulling together a multi-billion dollar grant program in like six weeks for all 539 cities, so.
And counties.
And counties, yeah, and the 159 counties as well. So kudos to the state and GMA and everybody that's worked on it, because it's really going to help us in our budgets when we come to present y'all a budget in the next couple of months. Dina, is there anything else that you want to add to it?
No, Brad actually prepared the resolution. Brad, do you have anything else to say about how hard the grant was to worth it?
Well, I'll simply say that, as you discussed, that a lot of places are unable to use all of the money, and part of that is because they didn't document what they needed to do in the way back when, and that has caused some issues with some folks. And then also, and we'll say that there's some other people that probably shouldn't have gotten money, the other authorities, agencies that are governmental entities, but the way that the grant was put together under the CARES Act and the federal side, some of those were left out. So it's, it's kind of kept 22, and I think that, you know, for Sharpsburg to get all $18,000 is amazing.
Yes, it is. So Dina, thank you for you and your staff. We really appreciate it. Okay, so if we don't, do I have any questions from the public regarding the CARES Act and funding and any of that? Okay, excellent. Council, any questions from y'all? Okay, if not, can I get a motion to pass the resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
All right, Elizabeth has the first, Cynthia has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, so the next resolution, or intergovernmental, the next item is an intergovernmental, inter, sorry about that, is an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the tax commissioner regarding our property tax collections. Our current agreement with the county expired with the retirement of Tommy Farrell from the tax commissioner's office. Robbie Brooks was elected in this past election, so she has taken his spot, so we need to execute a new agreement because we have a new tax commissioner. It's basically, is it $1.25 a parcel?
Yes.
That the county is charging us to collect and disperse our tax, property tax bills? It's a great deal for us. It's not a whole lot of extra work for the tax commissioner. This is the same agreement that we've had for eight or nine years now, and we're just redoing it with our new tax commissioner.
There are, there was a little bit of a change as Brad emailed. The first is in paragraph C, which it talks about the words including levy and sale was added to clarify that the tax commissioner, commissioner, or his or her assigns was being designated as a town's, what is that, an ex officium? Sure, for handling tax sales for the town's portion of the total tax due and not just the state county and school tax portions. And also, too, the second was the addition of paragraph D, which sets a definite schedule as to when the town's portion of the tax collections would be paid to us.
Okay. All right, so if I don't have any other questions from public or council, if I can get a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, Elizabeth has the first. All right, Tom has the second. All in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you.
And I realize that I'm saying unanimous without having a full council here, however, I mean there's no nay votes to anything that I've said. That concludes the new business portion of the meeting. Going into the old business is the second reading of our vehicle size restriction ordinance amendment. Basically, what this does is this restricts commercial vehicular traffic of six wheels or more, or of a vehicle over 12,000 pounds. Basically, what we're trying to knock out are box trucks and bigger through the downtown streets. Main, Tarrentine, Haynes, Stovall, Church, I think that's all of them. And this is just basically giving us the authority to ticket and take offenders to magistrate court, where they would then be fined by the judge as appropriate.
Do I have any questions from council? Any questions from public, attendees?
I would have the Tom suggestion that you do something about enforcement of that. You may have the last, I don't know if it's the final meeting or one or other, he referred to having it forced, or have you suggested it enforced?
So this morning, and I'm looking to see if I got a response, this morning I sent an email to the sheriff and the major over the patrol division and asked how much it would be per hour to get a deputy. Any deputy that sees a violation can enforce it through magistrate court, but I'd like to get a set number of hours to have a deputy sit somewhere in town in order to enforce all of our ordinances, not just this one. I'm waiting to get that hourly amount from the sheriff. When I do that, I'll come back to you and say, it's $40 an hour, $400 will be 10 hours. Do you approve it? And then we'll just set up maybe hours per month. First off, when you look at the budget, see what the budget allows, then we'll come up with an hours per month, probably come down a little bit, and then come to council and say, we can hire them for 20 hours, 15 hours for whatever month. And then we'll just coordinate with them to sit and make sure that they are aware that we have a new ordinance and that they can ticket anybody that's, that's coming through. I did want to ask Brad, what about the updated signs? If we don't have the updated signs up yet, would they have a reason to, to oppose the ticket?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, so, okay. So we do have 10 wheels or more, but it has not been updated, obviously, to the six and 12. We'll get those in place as we are working on the deputy, the timing of the deputies. I think they just say 10 or more, I don't think we've ordered the six and 12 yet.
One other thing, Lou.
Yes, ma'am.
It would be free if you could, the male policeman that sits at the Baptist church to sit down here.
Yes, yes, and yes.
I'd sit where I can see them, probably 80% of any day.
That's where they change shifts.
They down there all the time.
Right, yeah.
They're sitting.
Yeah, they are. And while we certainly encouraged, and we've asked, we can't direct it as much as we can if we actually subcontract and the deputy's part-time for the town. If he is part-time for the town, we can say, we'd like for you to sit here, 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 and here. And there's more chance it'll be followed in that scenario than just asking them to come off the church.
Paulie, if you could, look at the timeframe and let us know what you're coming up with, because you're right there at the entrance. That way we can use that timeframe as?
Please, Paul.
Yes.
I didn't understand what you said, Paul.
To use it for the deputy to be sitting somewhere around that timeframe, if you're seeing big vehicles come through here, like big semis and stuff.
And we did have a couple this afternoon, there was a wreck somewhere in Chirion, I think, and some people were rerouting, because I got phone calls about cement trucks on Main Street, or Tarrentine, about 3 o'clock, 3:30.
Yeah, I've seen like 16 plus wheels on highway vehicles.
I believe it, absolutely. Tom, did you have?
Did you want to name it, bring it out?
So what are we going to do when they start the roundabout?
Um, I mean, it's, same, same things apply. Now, some of the exceptions are contracted government vehicles, so I mean, I guess they could make the argument, but they don't make any sense to cut through town unless you're coming off 154, but we'll, we'll talk to DOT and ask that they not do it.
Yeah, they kind of always cut through when you come by the high school.
Mm-hmm, right.
One of the things to talk about, too, is writing down the name of who these people are. And a couple of the schoolmen sitting down at.
Yep.
With the contractor, the construction people and stuff, you've got this going on, and you have the police there.
Yep.
You're rounding by the high school.
Yeah, and I think now that, now that, hopefully that we pass this, I would feel more comfortable going out and doing that now that it's passed, but yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's definitely part of the plan. All right, any other questions? All right, if.
Do you think you can get any money out of this? Do you think you can get any money out of this? From magistrate work?
Um, it, it, it. It will, it is certainly not a revenue generating activity, however, I would like to think that we could cover the cost. But that's gonna depend on the officer and the judge. You know, we, all we can do is pass this and hope that, that they enforce it. But, you know, depending on what the ticket is, do we, do, Brad, are we setting the ticket in here or is that something that the judge does?
Well, your general ordinance says the amount of the charter, it's in the charter.
Oh, it's in the charter, okay. Okay. All right. So yes, while, while tickets will never be a revenue source, I, I mean, I would hope that we could cover it.
I think that's a discussion we'll have to have with magistrate officers.
Okay.
Because normally traffic offenses go to solicitors law.
Okay.
Stakeholder, which is written by a county deputy. So we need to have that discussion with the sheriff to see that.
See the best way to handle it.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent.
Because this is, this is a traffic related ordinance, uh, under Title 46, as opposed to a general ordinance of the city. You know, unsafe structures or crash, or that's what's considered a little different, and I don't know.
Okay.
We had that discussion.
Right. Okay. All right, do we have any other questions on it? All right, if I can get a motion from counsel to accept the second reading of the vehicle size restriction ordinance amendment?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Elizabeth has the first.
I'll second.
Cynthia has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, um, so we have concluded public hearing, new business, old business. Now we are at the public comment section of the, um, agenda. So, Ms. Polly, welcome back. I'm glad to see you back in the front row. Shelby, welcome to you as well. Do either of y'all have, um, any comments that you'd like to make to counsel?
I'm gonna have a lot to make.
Ma'am?
None that I have not already made.
Okay. All right, Shelby, what you got? Anything? Mr. Davis, do you have anything? All right. What about y'all? Mr. Mrs. Woods, Ms. Tinsley? All right, Mr. Nolan? All right. All right, uh, counsel, I will start down to my right. Ms. Cynthia, do you have anything for, for us?
Yes, I have one.
All right.
I'm concerned that was spoken to me at work, which is, um, my coworker. He does a living, said a living, like mother business. I think, uh, the street is William Circle.
Mm-hmm.
Right next to the refurbished building. Probably had the road kind of damaged from rain and all that. The pothole washed out, washed out. He was concerned about that cause of his mom, so I told him I was talking to the council.
Is it, so we, okay, so we.
It's the second entrance.
Yes, the five twenty ground place.
Stroger? Is so, is it, so is it the one that we just had, so, so we've had some work done over there. We've had several drain pipes replaced to try to get the water to flow so it's not going over. Is it that second or third house down on the left, if you're going?
Uh, Kenny Jane, Jane, uh, his mother, I call her Red.
Okay, now, I think I, I think I've met her.
Yes.
I, I think I know who you're talking about.
But he was talking about how she had to go the other direction just to avoid a big pothole.
Okay. I'll, um, I thought that we had that one taken care of, but if not, I will, I'll find out. I've got some, some transportation updates as well.
Yeah, I don't know how, how the facts are, how true it is, but he was saying, um, before the refurbished field company got there, it was like that he thought maybe they were doing some stuff that wasn't.
The refinishing place?
Yeah, like how they, I guess, washed, drained the water out.
So is it that pothole that's coming up right there at the end of? At the stop sign? Okay, 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 yes. So I have some specific information on that.
He was talking about maybe they were using something that, like, some kind of drainage.
No, it's just poor drainage right there, and that is a low spot where it collects and the traffic that's turning has just kind of dug out that hole. If you look at it, it's right on the edge of the DOT right of way, so the county didn't want to fix it. But, because it's in the DOT right of way and they really need to do it. So I will add that to, I didn't, I didn't realize it was still getting worse, but I'll ask DOT to go back. Cause basically what they've got to do is instead of having that slope, they're gonna have to grade it out so the water comes down and then goes into the ditch and then goes through the conveyance down towards Dollar General. It's ponding right there just because there's a hole, and that's what it is. But yeah, I'll, um, Dina, can you remind me on that?
We've already discussed that with the county on several occasions.
Yeah.
It was something that they've always been working to get to, so.
And in fact, the county just did, just finished the last drain pipe for our L-MIG money for William Circle. And I think that was the last of the, of the L-MIG request that we put in. But they did bring that, cause I asked about that pothole and they said because it's on DOT right of way, DOT has to fix it. But I've got some updates for them anyway, but I'll, I'll go into that.
Well, that's it.
Good, thank you. Elizabeth?
No.
Tom?
No.
All right. So that, uh, ends the polling. The counsel. Ms. Dina, for the clerk's minutes, I believe we have some news or an announcement?
Well, the first thing I want to say before you ladies and gentlemen leave on the council, there, I have several things that I need you guys to, and ladies to sign before you leave. But I do have an announcement, and, um, I just want everybody to know that I'm gonna be getting married October the 2nd.
Yay. Are you getting married here?
Um, yes, actually not, in Sharpsburg. Um, we're actually going to Fayetteville to get married. With the COVID, you know, I've got so much family in Brunswick and a lot of things are just not happening. I mean, of course, you can look at our rentals and see that as well, but once everything kind of settles down, we're gonna have a couple of receptions. One down there and probably one up here, so.
Fun.
Yeah, so we'll let you know.
I might can cut you a deal on a place to hold your reception if you want me to. I don't normally do favors for anybody, but maybe for you, I'll do one.
Well, I definitely would want the whole facility.
Are you gonna have alcohol? Will there be alcohol? Um, congratulations, Dina. We're so happy for you.
Yeah, we're excited, so, uh, you know, it's gonna be sad because we're gonna have FaceTime family on at the wedding, per se. And, you know, watching these mothers and brides canceling their, um, their weddings, then you hear has been the saddest thing. It's been, we canceled 17 weddings this year. You know, we tried to reschedule and it just, you know, because a lot of people are coming from out of town, you know? Um, so it's just been a sad situation, so I'm not gonna go through that right now. We're just gonna get married by judge in Fayetteville, and then we're gonna have receptions at different places so that people won't have to travel. And I think that's just gonna be the best way. We, we were trying to think about it in the summer and it just, it just didn't work out, you know, so this is gonna be the best.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Do you wanna, um, talk about the budget for your party? You want me to do that in mine?
Um, you can do that.
Okay.
Yay.
Budget.
Okay, so the good news on the budget is that as of the third quarter, um, we have received 73% of our budget, but we have only paid out 59%. So as usual, Dina's financial wizardry, um, is, is really paying off for us. We are, we're in as good of a place as we can be, having had a fourteen thousand dollar hit on our, on our rentals. We bring it in, you know, about what we should, and we're spending less than, than, than we're budgeted for. So that's in a good spot. We still anticipate having a, a budget to propose to y'all in probably November. I want us to have the month of October to go back and forth. We'll present it in November, uh, talk about it again in December, and then pass it in January, at our January meeting, in order to meet our, our charter requirements. Dina, is there anything that I particularly need to go over with the budget? I mean, everything else is, is COVID accepted? Everything else is in line with where we are and, and what we've projected?
Well, section of 30th, we will definitely give y'all handouts of everything that y'all need to see, um, as far as handouts and stuff like that, as far as our spreadsheets. We just kind of wanted to let you know where we are on a monthly basis, but quarterly, we wanted to let you guys, you know, open it up to the public and.
For input and, and some priorities in their direction. Okay. So is there anything else, Dina? You, are you done with your minutes?
No, I think.
What else did you have?
Um, you know, we'll be receiving probably about twenty-two thousand dollars in our insurance premium tax in October from the state. We also, the office of this insurance commissioner, I'm sorry. And then, um, in November, I believe, we receive our current year property taxes. So everything, um, is in line as far as our receivables, and, you know, we cut spending, so we're only working with minimal stuff right now just so that we can save as much money as we can spending out. But, um, but I really don't have anything in the red. I mean, actually, there's nothing in the red. So right now, you know, we're just, we're just plugging along.
Okay. Anything else for clerk's minutes?
No.
Okay, excellent. Um, do I have any questions from public or counsel about the information Dina's presented? Other than a hearty congratulations? All right. Um, so for the mayor's updates, the first, uh, individual I want to introduce is Chris Davis with IES Engineering. Um, he has an update on the parking lot. So Chris, if you want me, if you wanna hand me the thing, I'll hold it up and you talk.
Where do you want him? You're gonna do a walk and trail on that thing y'all talking about?
Yes, that is part of the concept of the decision. So go ahead, you just go ahead and start.
Okay.
So we started with state waters and, um, stream delineation of the sign over here. I'm sure this was gonna be in a femoral stream or intermittent stream. So we have completed that, and that has come back, uh, for negative, for any state waters.
So that was the first, that was the first, um, item on the mayor's minutes. The other updates that I'd like to give you guys is our, um, comprehensive planning. Our five-year comprehensive plan is due in October of 2021. Like to have a year for the steering committee to meet. We gotta hold two public input sessions and then pass, counsel has to pass and accept the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive planning steering committee is probably gonna be made up of five to seven individuals. Mayor, at least one representative from council, business owner, business owner, resident, and maybe another subject matter expert. The steering committee will take our current comprehensive plan, look at what improvements we need to make, and then come back and, and hold public input sessions to say, hey, this is what we see that we need, this is what we think that we need, what do you think that we need? And then we'll just take the public input and build it into the plan, come back with a draft. Counsel would look at it, public comments would be made, and then we, we would refine the version and then come back and pass it in August, September of 2021 to be sent into DCA by October 31st of 2021. Um, I hope to, I wanna come to y'all with a, a slate of a steering committee. But one of the things that we have to be careful of is a quorum. If Tom and Elizabeth both want to attend the comprehensive planning meeting, it needs to be a public meeting because there's a quorum of people. What I would like to do is when we have the steering committee meetings, have them as a public meeting. So if we wanna have two or three council members present, we're still within the sunshine and open meeting laws. When we pull the, um, steering committee together, at that point, I'd like to lay out the dates so everybody can plan around. And if we announce them publicly, then we're in the clear. I just don't wanna limit any of y'all from coming, simply because we don't wanna trip over any open records, or not open records, any open meetings, um, laws. So I, I really think that's, as long as there's no advertising fee that the Times Herald is gonna charge us for having these public meetings, that's my biggest thing, is I don't wanna have to pay 200 bucks a time to advertise 400 for. Yeah. So maybe just do one and say, this is when we're gonna do them. And as long as that suffices, he's, he's nodding over there, so I'm happy, um, then go ahead and do it like that. So that way, anybody that wants to come can, can come. Yes, sir.
We talked one time about having a council member on the thing, having fluid.
Yeah, and that was another option. Before I, before I thought through the open meetings thought, uh, open meeting requirements, my thought was to have y'all rotate through it. But I'd rather have everybody come in and be able to talk just like we are now. You know, it is, it would literally be a work session before the council meeting. Um, we would have some during the day just so that we have it at different times for everybody to participate, but.
Can you pull out?
Yeah. So that's the comprehensive plan. I'm hoping to send out an email to you guys by the end of the month with, um, the slate of, of the committee members. And if y'all have anybody that you want to participate or, or want to include, please send them to me. Um, I've got a couple of names in my head, but I haven't talked to the individual. I've talked to one. I have invited the Bridges family to be on the steering committee. Um, he, he said that as long as his schedule allows, Joe would attend. So the offer's out there. I want them to be included in it. Business owner, property owner, resident, and then the, the, the council and staff, I think, would give us our five, five to seven members. And then we have copies of the comprehensive plan in there. I'll give it to you before y'all leave, so y'all can start flipping through it. Uh, Three Rivers is gonna help facilitate that and will help us write it. But the text that is in there is, is gonna be ours. They'll be in the format that they suggest to meet DCA's requirements. But this is what is gonna drive our planning for the next five to 10 to 15 years. We will do a, a update every five years, but this is what we are, this is our plan of action. These are the steps that we're gonna take. You're also gonna get a chance to see our community work program, which is all the activities that we have listed that we were gonna do in the 2016 version of this, that ran from 2016 to 2021. So you're gonna get a, a stack of all the neat stuff that we've done in the last five years. And it's pretty impressive. I had to break out those tasks among Randy and Julie. We had done so much. So I'm very excited about that. Any questions on comprehensive plan? As far as zoning, um, I have put out and gotten three or four different towns zoning ordinances. And when I get them kind of sort of organized, I'll send them out to you, and then we'll just start talking about it. I like this zoning ordinance from this town. I like this part from this one. I wanna put this part in here. Because one of the things that we've said, and Sherry will probably agree with us, is the zoning document is, is more than confusing. We have to go to the site development regs, we have to go to our zoning ordinance, and then we have to go to the building code section to answer one question. That's three places to look. It's, it, it served its purpose, but let's go ahead and find something else that works better for us in this time and in this time now. I do wanna get feedback from everybody that's gone through the building permit and zoning process as we're doing this, so we can make sure that it fits. Because it's just, it's too hard, and it's not fair on staff, because everybody gets pissed at her and everybody gets mad at me when we say we can't do something. But it's in the rules and the regulations that we have to follow.
And my thing is if there's a question, you know, there's no reason that the staff should be like.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Right.
So it needs to be streamlined and easy, so when someone's like, well, why is it like this? It's easy to answer and there's no confusion.
Yep, and.
When you see how thick it is.
Oh, yeah.
You have to really do your homework every question before you can simply answer, you know?
And it's, and it's not fair to them, because those are our end consumers out there. They're the ones that are having to, their investment hinges on, can I find this one question in these three places? That ain't right. Yeah. I mean, it shouldn't be that. I mean, that, we need to make sure that we, 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 everybody's safe, everybody's secure. And beyond that, it needs to be common sense regulation. And right now, we just don't, we just don't have that. So anyway, uh, that is.
We do need to include variances, um, whenever we do these, this zoning ordinance and building permitting and all that stuff. It needs to all be in one section, like you said.
You can build a code, it's gonna be separate.
Yes.
Yes.
Site development regulations will be somewhat separate. But the zoning code is too cumbersome at this point. And some of the things that are being, the zoning ordinance are actually in the site development reg. are actually in the site development regs and building code.
Right.
But there are certain things that are still gonna have to be separated, particularly with the landstorm permits and, and site development requirements. Those are not issues of zoning.
Okay, um, so, what I would recommend and ask of council is if y'all have a, a particular town that's about our size or where we want to be, that you like the way it looks, and, and you like the organization, and you like the, the presentation, send it to me, and I'll get in touch with their people and pull it down and include it in y'all's packets. And we're gonna have to do some work sessions to talk through this. I know that the, the length of meetings is an issue for those, for, for everybody who's not on the clock by the hour. Alan's back there nodding at me. So, what I would almost like to propose is if we set up work sessions before our council meetings in two thousand and twenty-one, we'll have time to discuss stuff, but we start the council meeting at six-thirty or six-forty-five. So, if you have a tight schedule and you can't be there for the entire work session, you can come in and just for, just for the voting, basically. I'd also like to look into a consent agenda, because we have a lot of, of stuff, I think, that we could pass with one motion and not have to, and if we have the work session beforehand, we've already had a chance to discuss it, because the problem is, is we can't sit as a group and discuss stuff unless we're in an open meeting, and right now, we're doing that from six o'clock until whenever for us to chase down our little rabbit tails. And once Tom and I get to talking on a subject, fifteen minutes will go by, and we ain't moved an inch. If we do that during the work session, we can cut down on some of the, the time that the full council will, will meet and pull together. But I'm, I'm getting the eye from him now over here.
I'm stupid about that.
Right, so, um, that's something that I'm gonna talk about with Brad and, and Dina, and see if we don't want to put a work session in front of our council meetings, just to, just to be transparent, but be respectful of everybody's time, because this is a volunteer council, um, and your time is valuable, and I'd like to make sure that we, we spend it properly. I had a conversation with DOT, um, we have had them looking at a couple of different areas. One of them, and I meant to say this in front of Polly, so if you talk to her in the next, um, in the next week or so, looking at cleaning up the fifty-four and Main Street entrance where the little turtle shells have come up. We've also had cars that are starting to go around the, the left-hand turn into the post office, so they're gonna look at doing something, maybe adding a partial lane right there, or coming up with better dividers that won't be knocked over as quick as the turtle shells have. Talked about, uh, some of the drainage issues that we're having over here. Since we're doing, um, the back parking lot, I went ahead and talked to them about those conveyances under sixteen. We've got one pipe that is starting to collapse on the other side of sixteen, but I wanted them to be on the table with our back parking lot changes, because we are gonna be coming up and doing some work around that, uh, conveyance right there. Um, I will add, follow back up with them and add the pothole for, uh, William Circle. They are looking at helping us fill in that drop-off at sixteen in Church, that was one of them. I had the railroad out maybe two weeks ago, and they've changed people again at Norfolk Southern, so now they're only doing stuff within two or three feet of the track bed, which is way, way outside, so I'm glad we got what we done, got what we did done when we did it, because now the railroad is like three feet, three feet on the other side of the rails is what we're worried about. So, but DOT is gonna look at it and see if they can come in and extend that pipe out and then fill it over. If they can't do it, we can get a permit from them to do it ourselves, and I don't really, I mean, it would, it would be money, but I don't think it would be that bad to run ten feet worth of pipe and then put some dirt on top of it. Pretty much, yes, so at least that way, and we had, um, the county captain put our warning barrier back up right there.
How much is it? I need to check this. The hole is on the westbound side road, and we want to get on, people coming eastbound.
Yes, yeah, I'm trying to catch the people coming off of sixteen, basically, is, is, is why it, it is right there. So, that way, when they make that wide turn, they'll see, "I need to make a turn." Mm-hmm, and say, "Oh, yeah, that's where that was, or that's why that was there." So, that's where we are on DOT. Oh, we are having a book sale, October seventeenth, um, you'll be seeing stuff coming out about that. Uh, we have had a couple of business opportunities come up for downtown. We're working with the Bridges and the, the potential people to see what they want to propose. Hopefully, we'll have something more to go to council in October. The mural, New Nukoid Art Association has finished their mural. We still need to put a, a clear coat on it for graffiti protection, but that's done, you'll see some publicity about that. Dina, is there anything else, high level, that I need to throw out there that I'm forgetting?
I don't think so.
Okay. Yep, so, okay, so, that about covers my mayor's minutes. Do I have any questions from you guys about anything? Alright, uh, any questions from public or other attendees? Alright, that being said, all business, new and old, all comments being made. If there's not anything else, if I can ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, Cynthia has the first.
Second.
Elizabeth has the second, all in favor? Motion passes, we are adjourned, thank you.